Hello.
I'll be back, I'm on the development, I'm on the progress myself. Eric James on the side, okay? No, totally, and not a type of person.
I thought it was Luda.
Sorry?
I thought it was Luda.
No, it was, it was, it was. He is, no, he was, he was just kind of shared, shared all the people, but he definitely had one. He's the director of many ideas. I bet, I bet, as I've. So, no different to any corporate.
Yeah, let's go. Okay, councillors. Can we start, please? I open the ordinary council meeting on the fifteenth of December twenty twenty at six thirty-five P M. I'll read out the prayers of acknowledgement. Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow our blessings upon the council and to direct our and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of Randwick and Australia. Amen. I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the land of the Bittigal and Gadigal peoples who occupy the Sydney coast, being a traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to the elders past and present and to any other regional people here in attendance today. I call for absences or lateness.
Yes, councillor Singh is an absence. Councillor Singh?
Singh? Uh, any further? That's it, we're all here. Um, any declarations of pecuniary, non pecuniary interests? As last time I have a non pecuniary but significant.
Sorry, Mr Mayor.
Oh, sorry. I didn't say, sorry, go ahead.
I'm just a non significant, non pecuniary interest in that I know a resident in a adjoining building, which I acknowledged at last council meeting.
Thank you. Any further? Councillor Shirenas?
Yeah, to be consistent with my previous declaration, it's non significant, non pecuniary. Uh, one of the residents who's, who is objecting, uh, who's an objector to this development is, uh, known to me through my affiliation, association with the Liberal Party. Thank you.
Any further? Okay, so as I have a non pecuniary but significant interest in this matter, I remove myself from the meeting and hand over to the Deputy Mayor, councillor Philip Beattie, to chair the meeting.
Thank you, councillors. Um, I'd just like to read out the privacy warning. In respect to Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause five point two to five point two-three of council's code of meeting practice. Audio and video recording of meetings is prohibited without permission. A person may be expelled from a meeting for using or having used an audio video recorder without the express authority of council. I'd like to call on the first speaker for N R four twenty, notice of rescission motion submitted by councillors Andrews, Roberts and Stavreinos, interim heritage order for five Berwick Street, Coogee. Speaking against the matter is Ms Linda Avramides.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to see you all. Um, I'm speaking as, um, Philippa just said that, um, you know, I'm against the rescission motion and the demolition of five Barwick Street. I'm here to object to this rescission motion and that five Barwick Street be listed as a heritage item. So just a bit brief overview on the proposed demolition of this building. It's an important building in a street of great heritage merit, increasingly rare in Randwick and Coogee. In March two thousand and nineteen, just a bit of the history, the fight to preserve this building was initiated by Mr Patrick Cunningham, a long time resident of Barwick Street. By June two thousand and nineteen, we as a community requested that the council preserve all historic buildings on Barwick Street, one, three, five, twenty-one and twenty-three. These last two currently listed on the Coogee Federation Heritage Walk website, as they are all clearly a cohesive example of our history and were the examples of the interwar as well as the federation periods. The developers, Barwick Holdings, P T Y Limited, then paid for and presented a very biased proposal to council, pointing out that the lack of heritage significance of the two buildings. In recent months, following the request of many of us in the community, due process was followed and formal independent heritage studies were undertaken. As a result, extent heritage advisers based on the builder's heritage assessment concluded that number five does meet the threshold for local listing as a heritage item. And last week, council happily acknowledged this and due to its remarkable heritage features and distinct characteristics, we were glad to hear that an interim heritage order was placed. We believe that the homes in Barwick Street, especially number five, offer some truly distinctive insights into our history that need preserving for future generations, similar to the Edgemah Estate currently being considered. We as a community have had an ongoing struggle when it comes to protecting our heritage buildings and green spaces. And now, due to COVID nineteen, developers have had their DAs fast-tracked by the state government and community consultation is almost negligible. Our ongoing aim is to preserve our history and have our voices heard. We want the cohesive aesthetic of our streets in Coogee and Randwick to, to be, not to be filled with unsightly developments. We strongly object to the rescission motion by these councillors. Once again, we are up against short-sighted developers who care little about the community and our heritage. We object to the planned development and raising of this building.
Excuse me, Ms Avramides, I'll grant you an extra minute.
Okay, sure. Um, so basically, numbers one, three and five need to be also formally considered, but, um, the overall, um, state of being is that only about ten percent of our buildings in Randwick, Coogee are, are separate houses and that's a rare thing. So this has got to be considered as part of your decision. Um, please ensure that this building too is not lost to us. The rescission motion must be overturned and the interim heritage order honoured. And thank you for listening and for considering.
Thank you. Uh, would any, uh, would you, uh, be happy to receive some questions from the councillors?
Yeah, I'll answer them to the best of my capabilities.
Councillor Mattson?
Uh, madam, thank you for coming along tonight. Um, could you just clarify for me the time period in which the community has had an interest in the possible heritage value of five Berwick Street? How long?
Yes, it started in, um, March two thousand and nineteen. And, um, it's been ongoing with, um, submissions, petitions, um, phone calls to the council.
And those submissions, what were they for?
They were to protect the building, to, to, to prevent it from being demolished. Um, it's ever since, uh, there was, um, interest in buying number three and five and raising them to build a three-storey development, which will overshadow all the buildings around it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillors, are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I now call on, uh, speaking for the rescission motion, Mr Andrew James.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, mayor, deputy mayor, councillors and residents, distinguished guests. Um, firstly, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional laws of land. Um, and I'm here to, uh, represent, uh, CAE. My name's Andrew James. I'm the CEO of the business. Um, and I know that, uh, this process, um, has been frustrating, uh, in the last little while for everyone, um, and I do want to acknowledge that. Um, I want to take this back a step and I know I've only got three minutes, so I'll get to the point. We're here to talk about the heritage and we're also here to talk about the future of Berwick Street, um, and acknowledging the important factors that heritage plays in, um, a community and the L E P. Um, we felt that, uh, we have followed, uh, since the lodgment of our D A almost six months ago, a site that was never identified for heritage, um, and or does, does not form part of a, uh, conservation area. Um, comes as a surprise to me that almost two years ago, these conversations around heritage have been had with council. Um, and yet, um, for the landowner, who I'm also representing here tonight, uh, Ryan, uh, he only heard about this two weeks ago. Um, there's something wrong in that in itself and whatever comes out of today, um, will, will, will pass. Um, but as the CEO of a development company and working within the industry, and I would consider working sensitively with development and dealing with heritage where we see fit, um, in regards to dealing with our heritage consult consultation. Um, we felt that we have been clear and, um, uh, straightforward and transparent, all the way through this process. We've lodged a D A, we've followed due process, we went to the extent acknowledging that there's areas of importance within Coogee, um, and I'm not denying that. Um, we, we, we want to acknowledge that there should be a broader heritage study coming forward to provide certainty to an industry so that developers or landowners aren't left on the lurch based on a renovation or a development, as it might be. So I think this tonight is a broader conversation, not just for our site or Ryan's home, but any house that's been identified on this supposed heritage list within the area. Um, it becomes a broader conversation around Coogee, uh, and Randwick and, and we are cognizant of that. Um, we have put forward the motion for a rescission, uh, on the basis that we've always made had an open book policy, even broadly with residents and the landowners. And we would like to keep continuing that engagement in consultation. I don't find that the interim heritage order changes necessarily our resolve. And if it has to come to that point, we have our different avenues that we'll take.
Mr James, I'll grant you an extra minute.
Thank you. So I won't go back over a lot of information and I do appreciate we're here last week talking about this same matter. But I will want leave this idea in everyone's mind tonight. Anyone who has a home, and for myself, in an area of significance, of in heritage importance, you as a council have to provide certainty to residents, to the industry, to these people behind me, the residents that are acutely aware of this development because it's in their backyard. And all we seek is that we work with council, uh, on a broader scale as an industry, uh, to make sure that these matters aren't retrospectively put as a, as a last minute, um, uh, position of, uh, I H O on this site. Um, if the result is today that the interim heritage order stands, then we will have to look at our appeal rights, not just as the I H O, but we'll be looking at that.
Mr James, that's four minutes.
Sorry, half, thirty seconds.
Uh, may, perhaps we can move to questions now?
Sure, questions, thanks.
Sorry, were there any questions? Uh, councillor Roberts?
Uh, are you considering making an appeal? Do you think the, uh, the argument for interim heritage order does not stack up so much that you're willing to, to spend the money on an appeal to the Land Environment Court? Is that what you're about to say?
Well, at the moment, we've always maintained an open door policy with council. We would like to sit down and hold the rescission. And in March or February, whenever the council comes back, we sit down and work together in working out a solution. And a solution that works for the residents, that works for Ryan and for the community. If, for instance, the interim heritage order is implied today, it gives us a lot of doubt about the process and means that we need to explore our ultimate, our other avenues on that. And we'll likely to, to call an appeal on the I H O and ultimately would be subject deemed refusal on the development. I, I would like to add one more thing, if I may.
Uh, if it's in response to the question?
So, yeah, there's a broader conversation at the moment, the Department of Planning, about councils and how they're dealing with these matters. We're talking with the department on that. And it relates to Land and Environment Court and the appeals process. This is a matter that needs to be dealt with by council. And we feel that the interim heritage order and an L and E process does not give any more certainty to anyone. It just creates doubt and it creates doubt to the constituency. It'll create doubt into next year. And putting this development aside, it creates doubt in the community that due process is followed as a conservation consideration in the area.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Parker? Follow-up question from councillor Roberts.
Thank you. So just to be clear, uh, if the, if the interim heritage order carries, uh, you'll be, um, waiting at least six months, um, until the study returns. So you, you will appeal to the Land Environment Court next year sometime?
Yes.
Okay. And if the rescission motion carries and there is no interim heritage order placed on the property?
Yep.
You would like to continue discussing with, with council?
And the residents.
Issues like that?
Yeah.
Thank you. So you're not about, you're not about to rip down a property over Christmas?
No, God, we're not doing anything. It's Ryan's home. We don't own it. It's Ryan's home. I'm not sure he's going to be doing that. It's his house and it was his house and it was meant to be his house into the future until he realised that the owner of lot three decided it wasn't practically viable to keep the commercial dentistry there. And he was saying likely it'll be a development site in the future and that created a problem for Ryan and his young family.
Councillor Parker?
I'd just like to, if, if, if it would be possible, if you'd reiterate the comments in relation to wanting to have a, a good faith conversation with the community and council.
Yeah.
Um, were the rescission, uh, to be successful?
Yeah.
Uh, and, and the only reason why I, I say that is you very soon after went to the statement that you'd be pursuing legal options, um, were counsel to put it in place. And, and the only reason why I say that is the, the two items in, in terms of, don't necessarily follow in terms of the desire to have a good faith conversation and simultaneously going, well, actually.
It's a very good point.
Uh, 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 you know, our willingness to participate in that process is, is very low. So I'd just like to, if you could just go into a little bit more detail as to how, um, your, your ability to have a good faith conversa- conversation with council and the nearby residents is somehow prejudiced by the presence of the order.
So I think it comes to a broader conversation around, um, the heritage review that council is undertaking across the entire precinct. I don't think it relates to just our house, um, or Ryan's house. It relates to every. I don't think it relates to just our house or Ryan's house, it relates to every other house that's been identified and listed. If there was a, an undertaking that we knew that that heritage list was forthcoming and would be part of the broader conversation within the community and saying that is this something that Randwick is on a broader scale wanting? Because at the end of the day, heritage deals with two factors, it's the rarity of the actual site and we've done a desktop study, we've done independent reviews and we can have three different independent consultants tell us three different things of what's important and what's not, but it really comes down to the community, to deciding what's best for the community. And the scale and the breadth of how far that goes, I think is something that needs to be tabled. Our development may be, you know, a conversation that we can work together in getting outcomes that works for everybody. When I refer to the rights of an appeal, that is purely our right in the event that we feel that there is not a due consideration of engagement with us. We lodged a DA six months ago, we have had minimal engagement from council and the council planning team. Our planning, our planning consultants have reached out to the director of planning several times with no correspondence. It doesn't give us a lot of faith that we can sit down and have a meaningful conversation and it's a frustration that we're sitting here and having that conversation tonight.
Councillor Parker, did you have a follow-up question?
Sorry, just one follow-up in relation to the intention to have a, you know, a reasonable good faith conversation with council around it. As you've just said, there haven't been many discussions with council and we're already suggesting that you would exercise the right, which I don't know, I would assume would be a last resort rather than the first resort. So I'm, it just, I'm a little at a loss as to how you can have a reasonable conversation if we've gone from A to, from the first step to the final step.
Well, we have, yeah, sorry, I won't interrupt, but I don't think we've even had the first conversation with council in regards to, we've requested for the RFIs for several months now, we've had an independent design panel support the project, we've had, and even acknowledging that there was no heritage identified for this location. Now, we are, I believe, responsible developers and it becomes apparent that there is a lot of, I guess, lack of faith behind me that we are. All I can say is, you know, in the best interest of what we do, that's not how we develop property. You know, we develop property for people to be owner occupiers into the future that want to be best friends with the residents. They don't want to be, oh, well, there's a big development next door, we never want it. So we're consultive, we would like the opportunity, rather than putting an interim heritage order as a six-month delay whilst council does their independent review, let's sit down and have a meaningful conversation, uphold the rescission, nothing's changing. If anything, it just gives me confidence that there is going to be a open and transparent conversation. It's unfortunate we're in December because it sort of goes off the boil for several months, but nothing's changing from our point of view. If anything, we would engage with the residents over that period and with Ryan to work out the way forward. You know, and, you know, it is a six-month heritage order, I understand that. What happens in six months when the, if the heritage, broader heritage conversation hasn't been resolved? Where does that leave this project and proposal? We would like to sit down and have that conversation without it being sort of a cynical knee-jerk reaction to making sure that there isn't a result. At the end of the day, you control the consent, we can't do anything. We can't do anything with the development. We can't, Ryan's not doing anything with the development. So an interim heritage order is, I think, an overreaction to a DA which currently is considered and all we've asked is a request for information on the actual consent and it doesn't seem to be coming for, doesn't seem to be coming forward. If someone could tonight give me the sort of direction that there is going to be a meeting with the depart, with the planning team and working out a solution that works and marries everyone's interests here, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Are there any other further speakers? Councillor D'Souza?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr James. Mr James, I'm not very good with acronyms. What does CAPE stand for? CAPE?
CAPE, it's actually the, the...
Now, what does, do the initials mean?
Yeah, the, no, it's actually named after the founder of CAPE's, kids. So CAPE.
So what, it's a developing company?
It's a development company, yeah.
It's a development company. That sort of gives me a bit of clarity on this particular motion. Now, you said something interesting and you said something like, oh, this interim order creates uncertainty in the community, am I right? Is that, that's what you said?
I did.
But don't you think it also offers protection to the community? No, no, I'm asking, I'm not, look, you have to look up what debate.
No, I'm happy to talk, this is a, this is a live conversation.
I'm not debating anything, I'm asking a question.
Please continue your question.
Okay.
No, I'm happy to talk.
Please don't engage in debate.
I don't think Mr James feels offended with the path I'm taking. I asked him about, but I, the point I was making, it makes Councillor Roberts feel more at ease and we want him to feel very much at ease, the thing, the point I'm making, sir, is that you say it creates uncertainty, don't you think, this is a question then, don't you think it also offers a safety net, an interim order and protection for the community for what is dear to them or what they perceive to be dear to them? That's all, that is my question.
And it's a very valid question and I say, as someone who is not just a resident, not a resident, but from an industry point of view, if I was Ryan or one of the other residents that sits within a house that was built before 1955, what certainty do I have that I'm not going to have an interim heritage order provided on my property, which restricts, it has an effect with the LEP, it restricts the developability of the site, creates uncertainty bringing families into Randwick. I completely understand and I'm cognizant that there is important elements of what a interim heritage order does, but when it needs to be applied correctly in the event that there is a meaningful threat to that asset. So at the moment, I don't think there is a meaningful threat where we can't sit down and have a meaningful conversation to resolve these matters. So if councils are going to go and put interim heritage orders on every house that sits within 1955 or pre-interwar bungalow category, then they should go and do that right now. Or seek public consultation and saying, is this what everyone wants in the community? Yeah, I think, I totally agree and I think at the end of the day, it's about the expediency of actually coming to the community on it. You know, we talk about March 2019, let alone Ryan, I think he bought the house after that date. So Ryan, when he bought the house, had no idea that someone's talking about his house being into heritage consideration and I think, I think the council, as a responsibility to the constituents, including the important factors of heritage, need to advise people that these conversations are being had.
Are there any further questions for Mr James? Councillor Bowen?
Sir, Mr James, it's my understanding that the heritage, if, for example, the heritage order was made on a permanent basis, that doesn't preclude development, it just means any development has to respond to the identified heritage value of the property. That's right, isn't it?
It depends on the category of the heritage, yes.
But, but the bottom line is, it's not a bar to redevelopment of the site, it just, it would inform how that redevelopment would take place, is that fair enough?
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Thank you, Mr James.
Thank you, cheers.
As there are no further speakers, we'll move straight to the matter, NR420, notice of rescission motion submitted by councillors Andrews, Roberts and Stavreinos, interim heritage order for five Berwick Street, Coogee. Do I have a mover? Councillor Mattson? Oh, sorry. Is there a second? Does anyone wish to second? Ah, Councillor Roberts. Moved by Councillor Roberts, seconded by Councillor Stavreinos.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Before I address the motion, I'd like to refer to the extant report. So could we please put it up on the big screen? I sent a message through to council before the meeting.
Look, we don't normally have a presentation during the debate, I'm sorry.
It's not a presentation, it's a reference. Normally, normally these are supplied to councillors individually, like at the last meeting, so I'm surprised we don't have a copy here now.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. So I'll just wait. Okay, so that's, councillor, that's the report in question that, that we've made our decisions around. I won't refer to it right now, so I'll talk first. As I said last week, heritage is very important, I support heritage, we all support heritage, we all support the need for interim heritage orders. The context is, time is critical and the property meets extenuating circumstances. So having said that, we have to look at the case in hand at the moment. And I also would just like to add that, even though this is not relevant to the matter, two and a half days' notice for the owner pending complete change of development rights over their property was not very good and we, they respectfully asked us to put in a rescission motion and so we respected that and we put it in, expecting that they would have time to consult with a heritage professional to come back and make their case in the new year. So it's unfortunate that councils felt the need to put in writing that we have this meeting tonight, I certainly didn't expect it or want it. So it's a bit disappointing because they, then they got three and a half days' notice to, to put forward their arguments, so that's pretty unfair, if you ask me. So the two, the two points that, that extant say deserves heritage is that it is rare and that it is representative of its type. So extant themselves, if you can bring it up now if you like, extant themselves say that the property itself is not rare at all. If you go to page 11, it does the comparisons between the urban report, Urbis report and the extant report. And in the report, it says that the property is not rare in Randwick. Bungalows are not rare in Randwick and I think we all, you know, with our own eyeballs that they are not rare in Randwick. In fact, there could be thousands of bungalows in Randwick right now. And in fact, a quick peruse in a couple of minutes of the current heritage register has nearly 30 bungalows of this type already on the register. Now, if, I'd just like to say that, so therefore, they then talk about the internal integrity of the property and they say that examples with this internal integrity, still intact, is rare. So it's actually about the internals, it's not the externals, it's the internals. And it then goes on to say that refer, refer to the comparative analysis to back it up that the internals are rare. So the comparative analysis has eight examples, only eight, of interwar bungalows out of potentially thousands that are still there right now in Randwick LGA. And if we could scroll to the comparative analysis, it's on page 13. So there's two properties where it says, if you look on the comparative analysis on the right column, if you look at 25 McClellan, the interior was unable to be viewed. So they don't know what the interior is like and that's the whole basis of the argument that this is rare, the interior. And in fact, of the eight properties, if you just scroll through it slowly, read that comparative analysis, the last paragraph, they refer to the interior, two out of the eight say the internals are unknown. Another two of the eight says the internals appear to be something, which means that they actually don't know and they looked at some pictures probably. And the last, the last two, if you scroll to the bottom, if you keep scrolling, stop, keep going, stop. So 199 and 1992, it's referring to 38 Dudley Street in the interior. It appears to be a cut and paste. So six, and it says in that one as well that it appears as well. So six out of the eight properties in the comparative analysis that was used to justify rarity.
Councillor Roberts, that's five minutes, thank you. Councillor Stavreinos is the second.
I'll close then.
Madam Mayor, I reserve my right to speak at this time.
Councillor Mattson?
Thank you, madam. Look, I speak from the same document just shown us by Councillor Roberts, he's looked at criterion F, which is for rarity, but he didn't take us down another page and look at criterion G, representative, and I'll read you that one. Extent, they commented, extent heritage does not agree with the findings for criterion G. The dwelling at five Berwick Street both has the principal characteristics of an important class or group of items, interwar bungalows within the Randwick LGA, and is outstanding because of its integrity, both of which are guidelines for inclusion under assessing heritage significance. While the bungalow is typical, a typical example of its style, it retains a high degree of external and internal integrity that exemplify the principal characteristics of its type. Extent Heritage believes the dwelling at five Berwick Street meets the threshold for this criteria in a local, you can't just pick and choose from a council report. Now, look, I listened to the address by the developer and you'd think that up was down and down was up. You can't say that you want a broad community debate on heritage matters and then say you oppose interim heritage orders, as both Councillor Parker and Councillor D'Souza, sorry, you know who I mean, both said, they both explored that option. There's an inconsistency. If you want a broad community debate, you allow the Randwick heritage report and study to conclude. You allow the building to be protected from demolition by a CD compliant development certificate, they could be lodged by any developer and with just 14 days, that building could be demolished. We've been through this, we've been through a lot of this debate. Look, councillors Roberts and Stavreinos have said over the last couple of years that this was, that this study we're doing now is the appropriate way of assessing what buildings are worthy of heritage protection and yet suddenly we have arrived at this time, at this process, and suddenly the rules are changed all of a sudden. We cannot advertise that we're doing a heritage study, we cannot canvass for submissions and when we get those submissions, then fail to act to protect the items that is, are the subject of those submissions. It's consultation, it's showing your credibility as a council on consultation. There's no point in the community responding to heritage consultation if they know that we will not act to protect. What is a heritage, what is an interim heritage protection order? Interim, it's not permanent, it doesn't change the zoning as was said at the last meeting, it doesn't change the basic nature of the property as Councillor Roberts just said, it just puts a halt. It puts a halt to allow the proper assessment of the heritage value of a property that has been the subject of community submissions. And as the speaker against the rescission motion pointed out, the community has shown an interest in the heritage value of this house and in fact, several houses on Berwick Street since March 2019, this hasn't come out of nowhere. We have asked for submissions, we've got them, we now have to be creditable and prevent the possible demolition of that building. We cannot support the rescission motion.
Councillor D'Souza?
Yes, Madam Chair, I too cannot support the rescission.
Yes, Madam Chair, I too cannot support the rescission motion. But I'd like to ask to you, Madam Chair, to the mover, that report that was presented, who was that prepared by? Who paid for that report? And I'd like to, is that possible extent or something?
May I put that to the relevant officer? Mr. Kurayaku.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The consultant has been engaged by council to undertake the heritage study for, for council.
Mr. Kurayaku. You see councillors, last week I said, for me heritage is living with a tangible part of the past. But it's also about deciding that it's sufficiently important that we want it to, to make it part of the future, not just part of the present. The point I'm making is, an interim order offers protection to the community. We're in the midst of a report, we're in the midst of consolidating and, and deciding what is important from a heritage point of view for our community. We are elected by the community to put forward their views. And I, I'm sure councillor Stavreinos and councillor Roberts too have put forward their views. But the community have told us through Mr. Mattson and others that they would like this particular building saved for our children in the future. So we should do the right thing. At the end of the day, we are only the representatives of the people. If they could be here, here, sitting right here and allowed to present, to speak on this matter, we know how they feel. Miss Abramidi spoke particularly well and she put forward the view of the community. This building must be preserved for our children, even if it's only an interim order. It allows the community a chance to work and work with, with the council to see if this is a worthy heritage listed building. But as we've said, and as councillor Bowen points out, no one's stopping development. The, the person can continue to build, but within the regular, regulations that are present at the moment. So we're not putting spoilers here, we're saying if you want to do it, you can do it, but do the right thing. So an interim heritage order will give the community protections and a safety net. So we should not go backwards. We, this rescission motion should be thrown in the bin of history.
Thank you councillor De Souza, councillor Stavreinos.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Deputy Mayor. Look, both myself and councillor Roberts have never been against heritage conservation. In fact, when heritage was brought up on numerous occasions in relation to thirty-eight and forty Dudley Street, we moved an amendment requesting that the entire Randwick L G A have a heritage conservation review for, for the entire local government area. Now, in doing that, that's how you bring about consistency. Now, tonight we've heard from both councillors talking about consistency, that we should be consistent in the way in which we approach heritage conservation. Well, I don't believe there is consistency here because what we have is one single property that's been brought before us tonight and we're looking at the interim heritage order for one property, not all the other properties that have been mentioned as part of a heritage review for Berwick Street. Now, the biggest single investment that any property owner or any person makes in Australia today is the purchase of their house. And we heard from Mr. Colen at the last council meeting that he never intended on ever developing his site, his house. He wanted this for his family home. And what happened? Number three came up for sale and it was purchased by a developer. And that developer approached Mr. Colen and said to him, under no uncertain terms, look, we're looking to develop our site, would you like to be part of that? Because otherwise, if you don't intend on coming along with us, we could very easily develop a site without you. Maybe not to be able to build an apartment block, but they could still build a two-storey or a three-storey house because it's zoned for that in that area. And that would be detrimental to the amenity of Mr. Colen and his family. Now, Mr. Colen has the, runs the risk now of having a house that is, at number seven, you've got a four-unit, a four, four-storey apartment block. You could have a two or three-storey apartment block built next to him or a house. And Mr. Colen will be restricted as to what he can do in accordance with a heritage conservation order that will be put over that property. Now, that could not only be detrimental financially to him, but I'm sure it would be detrimental to him and his family and their wellbeing. Nobody wants to be overshadowed by any sort of development. And I can understand the fear that Mr. Colen has. Because I know from my own, my parents' experience, my parents live in a street where once upon a time there were thirty dwellings and now there are fifty. Because you've got duplexes being built all around them. And I can tell you, my parents have been overshadowed. They, they've been overshadowed by their neighbours who have developed their sites. Now, it's not to say that my parents couldn't do the same thing, but their site is just too small, so they're not able to do that. But now they're surrounded by two properties that had large sites and they're now being surrounded by these properties that are overshadowing and detrimental to their amenity. And I know exactly where Mr. Colen is coming from and I perfectly understand that. Now, I really believe tonight we should consider lifting the heritage order just to give Mr. Colen the opportunity to address the report that was put before this council. I think he should be given that courtesy. Because we're not talking about a game here, we're talking about the livelihood of a family man who bought this property with the intention of having it as his family home and now he's faced with a dilemma of having a developer building right next door to him and overshadowing him and giving him other issues, you know, other detrimental impacts on his amenity. And really councillors, look, I, I think we should consider this because I know exactly how he feels and, and how his family could be feeling right now as a result of what, you know, what we could be doing now with, in terms of putting this interim heritage order in place. I think, yeah, he paid a lot of money for his house and his investment could very well be reduced as a result of what we're about to do here tonight. And I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you councillor Stavreinos, councillor Bowen.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. As an East Ward councillor, I think it's important that I just briefly outline my position. I won't be supporting the rescission. I understand both sides of the argument and I, I am sympathetic to the owner. However, just briefly, I feel there's a bit of a dichotomy in the position that's been put forward by the developer in terms of fairly strongly opposing a, an interim heritage order to the extent of, you know, fair enough, but to the extent of flagging, potentially exercising legal rights on the one hand, and then on the other indicating that the time is sought in the absence of a heritage protection to have further discussion about the heritage issue, which would seem to me to be some acknowledgement of the, the heritage features. And so really, that, that concerns me because without the interim heritage order, there's, there's no protection. And as we heard, it's quite, it's, heritage is not preclude development. So I think on that basis, there's really only one option. And that is to take up the, the council's report by voting against this rescission.
Thank you councillor Bowen. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Roberts, would you like to close the debate?
Yeah, thank you. Just out of interest, did you start the clock last time when I stood up or when I started addressing council? Because it took about a minute and a half while we waited for the report.
The clock was paused.
Sorry?
I was going off the clock which had been paused.
Time flies when you're having fun. Councillors, there's, at the end of the day, we've got to look at the bottom line. We've got to exercise our position as leaders of our community and ask ourselves, does this property meet the heritage threshold? The question is, is it rare? Is it representative? The comparative analysis that justified rarity is invalid. Six out of the eight properties, they have not been inside to compare at all. They said themselves that these bungalows are not rare in Randwick. They also said that the joinery and plaster featured in this property is also common to the type. So therefore, the, the only conclusion you can come to is that this is not rare and it is around Randwick all over the place. The, the report, this comparative analysis is a joke. It's absolute joke. We shouldn't use it as a basis and in fact, it's a, it's an appeal basis for the applicant. We can't just hide behind this invalid report based on rarity. And the other one is representation, is it representative? I, I know that the owner invited us all to come and visit the property to see with our own eyeballs. Unfortunately, no councillors took up that offer, but I, I did. And it has an extension out the back that, so it's not a, it's not a self-contained example of its type. It's got a kitchen out, out the back on the last one-third, one-quarter of the depth. In fact, it went in and took over the backyard, so there's, there's just a footpath and, and plants in the backyard. Frankly, it's average at best. There's, there's also a fireplace feature that is clearly nineteen sixties. There's a built-in that takes up the ceilings that was added in. It is not a representative example at all. And it's average at best. And but on that basis, on representative, it is, it doesn't meet the threshold. And that's it. So as, as, as leaders of our community, we have to think about that and think about, are we going to, are we going to take away people's common law property rights on that basis? And I certainly can't put my, my name behind this, this report where a comparative analysis is actually invalid at all. And if they do appeal to the Land and Environment Court, there is, I feel there is a chance that they will win simply based on the fact that it, it does not meet the heritage threshold. And there has been examples in the past where owners have taken counsel to the Land and Environment Court to appeal an interim heritage order. I think forty-eight Dudley Street was the example. And so that, that's an example where a report can be shown to be not stacking up and the judge throws the case out. And I'd be curious to know how much ratepayers' money was spent defending that. I'd be curious how much ratepayers' money is spent defending this. So I, I, I support heritage, I think it's important. But we, we can't afford to, to jump at everything. We, we don't want to be the boy who cried wolf because, you know, people are going to get a bit, a bit tired of it every time a DA comes up and we ask for these I H Os. So thank you for your time, have a good Christmas.
Thank you councillor Roberts. We'll now move to the vote, I think we'll move straight to a division. So all those in favour of the rescission motion, please raise your hand. Councillor Stavreinos, councillor Andrews, councillor Roberts, and all those against, councillor Hamilton, councillor Shuri, councillor Nielsen, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, councillor Bowen, councillor Mattson, councillor De Rocha, councillor De Souza and the deputy mayor. I declare the rescission motion lost. I believe we're now calling for the mayor to return and close the meeting.
So thank you councillors, so if there's no further business, I declare the meeting closed at seven thirty P M. Thank you. All right, and thank you councillors and the food's on its way and wish everyone a Merry Christmas. I'll see you next week.